And with Hazelton, please let's keep her in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Reba, roll call for attendance.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Childs.
Present.
Mr. Early.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Yannick.
Here.
The announcement of our executive sessions, October 23rd, 2014, for personnel and litigation. Public announcements and recognition, Dr. Antonelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wallace. First, I would like to inform the public that through the fine efforts of our broadcast communications class, under the able leadership of Mr. Peiser, our board meetings, our monthly board meetings, are now being streamed live on the web. There is a link on the Hazelton Area School District website on the front page. If you click on that link, again, you can access these meetings live through any mobile device, laptops, cell phones, through any mobile device. So again, we thank Mr. Peiser and his students for that capability and also, again, for their presence at each monthly meeting, broadcasting live our meetings over Channel 99. Recognition, first, I would like to recognize two employees at the Hazelton Area Academy of Sciences. The Academy of Sciences did receive a Curb Appeal Award from Can Do. In fact, that building and property earned the number one overall visual appeal and beauty award in the entire greater Hazelton area. So for their daily efforts in keeping the building and the property in a pristine and beautiful state and in the process enhancing the quality of life in the local community, I would like to call forward for certificates of recognition, two members of the maintenance and custodial staff, Edward Craver, the head custodian, if he comes forward, please, and Patricia Payler, cleaning technician.
Thank you very much. Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Dr. Antonelli. We have two special recognitions this evening. One for four members of our football team who came to the aid of very valuable community service effort with our Catholic Social Services back in the late day of August, perhaps a very warm day as well. These four young men assisted all day long with the help and supervision of Coach Brennan and our athletic director, Mr. Barletta, to help move some very heavy items all day long, doing the quote-unquote "heavy lifting" for this project. And gentlemen, we appreciate you being out in the community, representing the team, representing the senior class, and representing the school. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come forward, Ryan Heller, Tommy Engel, Sean Meddick, and Anthony Lombardo. Thank you, gentlemen. And lastly, we're recognizing Fitness Headquarters this evening for a very nice donation to our Academy of Science, particularly the Stony Acre Field Trip, which is a donation of $200 offset costs for 13 students to go on this out-of-campus experience and in fact, help students that could otherwise not afford, attend the trip and have a great experience. So I don't know if we have a representative here this evening, but again, we'd like to recognize.
Dr. Butler, we do have Mrs. Ernst here who will say a few words with regard to that. Thank you.
Mary Ernst.
Mr. Krasinski, I put a flash drive, okay, it says Stone, if you search Stony Acres, it's in a folder by itself, actually, and there are four pictures that I'd like to share with you. The students went to Stony Acres yesterday, and it's a challenge course that builds trust, group initiatives, high and low elements. It's a wildlife sanctuary in East Stroudsburg, Pennsylvania. It offers programs for outside groups to make use of the property and its different activities. Students from the academy classes went to the Stony Acres yesterday. The facility offers a number of opportunities for groups to enhance communication among one another and build upon teamwork. Our students used the challenge course at the facility to build these team skills. They had to depend on each other to complete tasks. Students took on roles of leaders and followers to see that each important task was completed. These are skills that are critical for success in school and in life. And some of the things that you see in the picture, it required all of the students to be part of it and do their specific role. This one, they had to get that container of water to the exact spot in the ground and dump it. And it took every one of them participating and doing the right job in order for that to happen. One of the other pictures shows many students on boards, and the boards are set up on bricks, and the job is to get every member of your team... That's one more. Okay, that one. Every member of your team has to cross 15 feet, and you have to help each other or you just can't get to the other side, and they were able to get all of their team members across the bridge. So I think it was a very worthwhile endeavor, and we greatly appreciate Fitness Headquarters' contribution to this. Thank you.
And that concludes our recognition. Mr. Wallace. Public comment?
Uh, Mr. Wallace, if I could, real quick, just want to congratulate the Hazelton Cougars Cross Country Team. They're moving on to states, and by winning the districts, the entire team gets to go and participate at states.
Thank you. Congratulations to the Cross Country.
No names, Mr. Wallace.
No names? Okay. Approved board meeting minutes, or the regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Treasury report for September 2014.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
All in favor of Treasury's report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Before we move to the agenda, there's something I'd like to discuss here. And if I, if I didn't bring it up, I shouldn't be sitting here, to be perfectly honest with you. Dr. Antonelli, myself, and Mr. Donati had an opportunity to sit down on Monday and have a little discussion. And our elementary people are, I guess you could say, get overwhelmed a little bit at this point in their teaching lives. Well, we developed an entirely new curriculum in math and reading, and we dropped it upon them and basically said, "Okay, good luck, and let's see how it goes." And that should never happen. And when I say "we," I'm not pointing fingers, I'm talking about myself here, and just if anybody agrees with me. We haven't done a very good job of what it is that we should have been doing to help these people succeed. We haven't done a very good job in making sure everybody felt comfortable with the series and had the training that they felt they needed to get through this. When we have such conscientious teachers, that Mr. Donati will come back and say, "He actually had some teachers break down, saying, 'I'm trying the best that I can, but I just feel overwhelmed.'" We have to help them better. We have to do more to make our students successful. We have to give them the component in our technology that doesn't shut down halfway through the testing period, and the kids have to start all over. We have to do a better job getting more computers to the buildings so more children are able to test at the same time and not have to sit there waiting for everybody to get done. These tests, in some cases, are over 150 questions that are asking third graders to take. We then run into the problem where the teachers are sending stuff out to get copies. It's over 20 pages for the students to take this test. That's more than the SATs, all right? And then to be told, "Well, your building's almost at its maximum, you can't be making these copies. Make the copies yourself in the building." We have to do a better job giving them the support that's necessary. And then, you know, our lack of substitutes is an issue that we have district-wide. We have the worst call-in system I've seen. And the information that we were being given, all of us, isn't necessarily accurate. We asked this company to come in and fix it, it hasn't taken place. I want to give Anita Machie credit for sitting down with me and going through it and trying to explain it to me, and it is a mess. And tonight, we're also looking to resolve that issue so we can offer them more support. We have teachers who care, and if they didn't care, it wouldn't be a problem, all right? But when you have veteran people saying, "I don't know if I can do this anymore, I need some help," we have to do a better job of getting that to them. Steps are being taken, just so you're aware of that. And I'm saying it tonight so it gets out to everybody. Dr. Antonelli, Mr. Donati sat there and said, "Yes, there are things that we can do to make this work a lot better." We are trying. We haven't forgotten about you, we're not throwing you by the wayside. We care, because any one of us here could leave and nobody would miss us. You take that teacher out of the classroom, and there's a major problem. So I think what has to take place is we have to do a better job helping you for as much as you help us. Okay, thank you. Dr. Antonelli.
Curriculum and instruction, approve items 1 through 18 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Uh, two. On number 15, what's the agreement?
The agreement?
Yeah, we approved the affiliation agreement. What affiliation agreement are we talking about?
Oh, that's, that's number 14. On my agenda.
Sorry, 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 sorry. I'm thinking of number 14, I'm looking at.
That, that's an affiliation agreement for Bloomsburg University undergrad education majors to do field experiences and student teaching experiences here in the Hazelton Area School District.
Okay, so this is, this is what we've had in the past?
Correct.
Okay. And I thought I got my numbers right here at this time. When you talk about the swimming pools, you have for H.I.P., is this not for the public in general?
Dr. Antonelli, I can respond to that. Dr. Childs, we have community surf, excuse me, community swim on Tuesday and Thursday nights. Tuesday is at Valley, Thursday's at Freeland. Friday, the after-school swim is designated primarily for the Hazelton Integration Project.
Uh, Dr., I guess, Dr. Butler, the question I would ask is, if I wish to go swimming on Friday at Heights Terrace, is, is the pool closed to anybody outside of H.I.P.?
That's a good question. I'd have to look into that.
I, I think, if it is, I think we have to provide a night, because we're taking all the children in Hazelton and not giving them a night to go swimming anywhere. I mean, we're covering the valley, we're covering Freeland, I think if that is the case, we have to open at one of those other nights for those children who go to the other schools. So we're involved in H.I.P. to have the opportunity to swim.
Sure, I've been working with Eileen Stam on that. I'd be happy to contact her and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Antonelli, I have a question, number 16. Isn't this a duplication of TV broadcasting? We're using it at the STEM school and we're using it at the Krew Center? Why wasn't there some type of jointure there that they can come up and use the TV studios up here?
Well, again, this is an in-house show that's produced and directed behind the camera, in front of the camera, by the STEM students for STEM activities in that particular building.
So in other words, when they're going to be talking about SAT scores and technology for SAT tips, the other schools aren't going to be able to access that? It's only going to be for down there?
Well, it'll be archived. I mean, if they choose to, they can access it. But again, this was an activity, and again, working it out with the union, we thought we would structure it this way, much as we do with a mentoring agreement, $31 an hour for a total of 40 hours, to see how it plays out for this year before we would request that it become a full-fledged club activity.
Well, I, I have no problem with the, the $31 an hour. I just want to make sure that all students in the district have access to it, and I don't know whether archiving it is good enough or it should be livestreamed.
We could look into that possibility.
I would certainly rather see it that way, because everybody can be able to archive it. But if it was livestreamed, we could do it right in the classrooms.
Sure, we can.
For the 10-minute period.
We can look into that.
Thank you.
One, one that we're not voting on, but I'd like an explanation if I could. The, it says here that the Krew Center was awarded as Pennsylvania Supplemental Grant for $37,000, $38,000. That's, that's, that's gotta be a good thing. What, what's the award for?
Mrs. Herman?
She's her.
Okay. And again, I believe that's primarily for equipment. Mrs. Herman can confirm that.
Thank you. Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers 1 through 18, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Mrs. Herman, the question was, the money that was the supplemental grant, what was that for? Thank you very much.
Security, approve items 19 through 22 with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 19 through 22, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Nutrition, approve items 23 and 24 with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
23 and 24, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Transportation, approve items 25 through 27 with one motion.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
25 to 27, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Technology, approve items 28 and 29 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
28, 29, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Student activities, athletics, and extracurricular, approve items 30 through 33 with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 30 to 33, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Facilities and capital projects, approve items 34 through 39 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes, on 39, that's, the, the, the last item is going to be controversial. I would like to point out that I will vote for that with the idea that I would rather we sue them than they sue us when it comes to eventually following through with, with that bad dirt deal we're dealing with.
And, and, and Doc, and I'm voting the opposite way, having them sue us instead of we sue them. It's go, it's gonna be one way or the other, so.
Right up front.
Just to make it clear, why don't we let her those A, B, C, and D?
Great idea.
Do we have an explanation on A, B, C, and D?
Mr. Gunsher, can you give a quick explanation?
I think we had them at the meeting. We had them in our meeting.
Yeah. He did go over them at the committee meetings.
Mr. Gunsher, if you'd come to the microphone, please.
A is for the addition of a security folding gate in the corridor near the locker rooms to prevent access to the rest of the building when there are games or when there are practices and the teams are using locker rooms. So this was an addition that wasn't in the original project. B is to add a key switch to the elevator at this time. Anyone could use the elevator, so we want to limit access to the elevator also. So we're going to add a key switch. Item C is for the new entrance that was requested by the township's emergency exit. And that's what item C is for.
And four is dirt.
And D is what?
And D is the dirt.
The dirt?
Uh, Mr., go, go ahead, Doc. Uh, on, on B, they, they didn't think that a key switch might be needed for an elevator in a school?
Well, originally, yes. Originally, there were card readers for the elevators, and they were removed in the beginning. I guess value engineered. And so now, without key, card access or a key switch, anyone can.
Okay, yep. Thank you, sir.
And, and, uh, you very kindly provided us your recommendation with regards to number D at committee meetings. I would appreciate very much if you could, once again, tell us whether or not it's a needed item, was a needed item in your opinion.
Yes, that, when they were, when they were excavating for all the utilities in the back of the school, and they had to dig down eight feet, the dirt, there were bricks in it, tree stumps, and the trench would cave in on itself even though they had shoring in place. And as they excavated, it just kept caving in and getting bigger and bigger. So yes, it, it, the bad dirt was there. And it, it's been completed, it's been replaced.
If I remember correctly, you had mentioned that there was, that you would have needed a much thicker footer.
Well, that, that was for the building.
Right.
Yeah, this, this was for the util, utilities, but yes, that's correct. If, if you didn't remove the bad dirt to put the new building on, you would have to increase the size of the footings and the foundations. So, you know, cost of concrete is, is higher than to replace the dirt.
Uh, Mr. Gunsher, and again, I thank you for the tremendous job you've done in your position, and there's, there's just no doubt that the resurrection of that building is, is, I mean, tremendous. I'm gonna ask, and I, I know you know a whole lot about this stuff, was, um, I mean, could this, or should this have been foreseen with this dirt situation a, a while back?
Yes. I mean, if, if more testing was performed, but also the, the wet weather caused the water table to rise on a site which, you know, when dirt gets wet, turns to mud. And so that is, makes it unstable also. But being that I wasn't here at the beginning, I really don't know the history of what took place.
With this, um, with this additional surcharge, we're probably looking at a million dollars in dirt that the district is.
Eight hundred thousand.
Well, I'm, I'm rounding.
Yes.
To the nearest block. Take.
I mean, that, that's, it's almost a whole building project.
Small building.
Small, yeah, all right. I mean, it'd be a great house. I, I mean, we got almost a million dollars in dirt. Phew. Taxpayer, too. This, this is hard to comprehend. I mean, have you ever heard of such a thing in, in your?
Yes, I've been involved in projects where it costs $4 million for the, to remove dirt.
And, and was there, and should that have, and was that known before going into the project, that you had bad dirt?
Yes, they, they did more testing, more test borrowings. And yes, it was part of the, of the bidding process.
Okay. So, so it wasn't, it, it, nobody was taken by surprise? Because what we've been told, sir, and I don't think you were here for it, but we were told that dirt got wet.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, there, there.
Most dirt probably gets wet at some point.
Well, no, there, there was video and photographs of the dirt.
The dirt that we are talking about?
Yes.
In question?
Yeah, the, the contractor was standing on it, and he would just move his feet and the ground, it would.
Okay, so then, the testing wasn't that, wasn't that, uh, uh, difficult to perform if, if the contractor could stand on it and see that we had bad dirt? How, how was that missed, then?
I, I don't know.
Okay. Because I thought maybe it was some, you know, very unique situation and, and difficult and, but if, if it's something as simple as I could stand on it, I presume the contractor stood on it before moving forward with, with the.
Well, nor, normally, no, they wouldn't, when they were bidding on a project.
Yeah.
They just go by the information that they're given.
Okay.
And also, the tennis courts were, were back there, so it, you really couldn't see a lot of the site.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers 34 through 39, Mr. Benomo.
Yes on all, no on 39D.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes on all.
Dr. Childs.
Yes on all.
Mr. Early.
Yes on 34 to 38.
Mr. John.
Yes, no, but not D. No on D.
Mr. Mahalik.
Uh, yes on 34, 38, 39, excluding D.
So you're voting yes on 39A, B, C?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Uh, yes on all, uh, no on A, B, D.
39.
39, yes.
Ms. Yannick.
No on 39D, yes on everything else.
And Mr. Wallace.
No on 39D.
All passed except 39D.
Finance, approve items 40 through 47 with one motion.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 40 through 47, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
48, presentation of bills.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Number 48, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No on D.
No on A.
Okay, Mr. Benomo, no on D. Mr. John, no on A. Who else did I hear no vote on?
No on F.
No on F.
No on F for Mr. Early, no on F for Mr. Mahalik.
No on F.
No on F for Mr. Benomo. Any other no votes? Okay, I have it, the motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda, approve items 49 through 60 with one motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 49 to 60, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Approve items 61 through 72 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to thank Mrs. McHale for the, the very hard work that she's been doing in trying to recruit bilingual aides for our district. It's a very difficult process, and I appreciate that she's going through. That also relates to number 57.
Mr. Reba.
Number 61 through 72, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I have a motion passes.
Approve items 73 through 86 with one motion.
Questions or comments?
Certainly one, uh, at the. Certainly one at the conclusion of the vote. Dr. Antonelli, welcome our new... We will be happy to do so. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Reba.
Number 73 through 86, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Approve items 87 through 97 with one motion.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 87 through 97, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Any of the new appointees that are present this evening, if you would please rise so that we can welcome you into the district and acknowledge you? Congratulations, and we wish you a long and successful career here in the Hazelton Area School District.
Thank you for coming to our district. Dr. Antonelli.
Approve items 98 through 90.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 98 through 105, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
New business. Do you want to read that, Mr. Reba?
We have a new motion, recommend the board terminate the airport lease rental for storage space with a 60-day notice as per the lease agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any public comment on the termination of the lease? Mr. Reba.
All in favor of approving the new lease, or the termination of the lease, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Any other new business? Mr. Krasinski did ask me to bring up, if anybody is interested in purchasing, should I say, Mr. Krasinski, or taking, the Bishop, the old Bishop Hafey scoreboard on the football field, it is being taken down, and it doesn't work. But if anybody would like to put it in your yard, you're more than welcome to have it.
Actually, Mr. Wallace, we do have to put it for sale on either eBay or on the surface, so.
Okay, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of bids on it, Mr. Krasinski.
A lot of bids.
Lots of bids. Everybody wants a scoreboard in their yard.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
May I just take a moment and thank our student representative for being here this evening? Nicole Urbarchik, she's done a great job following along with the agenda and was particularly amused about the $800,000 dirt discussion.
Thank you, Nicole, for coming.
Mr. President, is anyone here from Food Service, by any chance? Oh, hello there. How are you doing? Each year for the past three years, we've celebrated with our senior citizens a Christmas breakfast. You guys are good? Awesome. Well, that's... Let's, I'll make that motion. Excellent.
Okay, first of all, wait a second.
So you don't like the Cur Center anymore?
Although, we got to go through this here now. Any public comment? No, we're going to do it right now, because this doesn't happen all the time.
Great recommendation.
And any public comment on the breakfast being moved to Maple Manor?
Okay.
Anybody like to help serve the breakfast at Maple Manor? Mr. Reba, roll call.
Motion, okay.
No, just, no.
All in favor of the new, do we get a public comment?
We did. Nobody wanted to...
All in favor of approving the new motion for the senior breakfast, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice have it, motion passes.
Do we have a date? Okay.
Excellent. Our media sources are wonderful in helping spread the word, and it's just growing leaps and bounds, and we just want to invite our seniors and also their guests. They're welcome to come for a very minimal fee. They have a wonderful, wonderful breakfast, and usually the entertainment, Mr. Wallace, is pretty decent.
He doesn't get out much, so that's why he likes to talk when it comes to... Any other new business from the board, from the audience? Any comments? No? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.